...ceremony. And right now, if it's okay, we're going to have a call to order, and I'm going to do a reading of why we're having this meeting. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I call for a special session for the Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, January 3, 2023, 2:00 p.m. at the City Council Chamber, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Court House Drive. The purpose of this special session is to allow the ceremonial oath of office to the newly-elected council members, elections, Vice Mayor, and oath of office to the elected Vice Mayor. Okay, so at this point, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
All present, Mayor.
Okay, that is great. And at this point, if we could start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Okay, and we are honored to have the Honorable James Clayton Lewis, Chief Judge of the Virginia Beach. God to be here, it's good to see you again, my friend.
As well.
And if you could be so kind to do the honors and swear these folks in.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take you one at a time, if that's all right. We're going to begin with Mrs. Henley. If you'd be so kind as to raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Barbara M. Henley,
I, Barbara M. Henley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 2.
Of all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 2.
For a four-year term
For a four-year term.
Beginning January 1, 2023
Beginning January 1, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2026.
And ending December 31, 2026.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am. This next one is for somebody named Norman Holcomb. I'm not, I don't know him. If you'd be so kind as to raise your right hand, sir. I, Norman D. Holcomb III
I, Norman D. Holcomb III.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the City Council of the City of Virginia Beach, District 1.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 1.
For a term of office beginning December 1, 2022.
For a term of office beginning December 31, 2022.
And ending December 31, 2024.
And ending December 31, 2024.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
And it's now back to Rocky.
Right, that's it. All right, Mr. Remick, if you'd be so kind. I, Worth Remick
Uh, Worth Remick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me as a member
All the duties incumbent upon me as a member
Of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 6.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 6.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2026.
And ending on December 31, 2026.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best abilities of my, so help me God.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Ross Hammond, if you'd be so kind. I, Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond
I, Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 4.
As a member of the Virginia Beach Council, District 4.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2026.
And ending December 21, 2026.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am. All right, Ms. Rouse. I, Jennifer Rouse
I, Jennifer Rouse.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
All the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2026.
And ending December 31, 2026.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, ma'am. Mr. Schulman. I, Joshua F. Schulman
I, Joshua F. Schulman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 9.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 9.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2026.
And ending December 31, 2026.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Last but not least, Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
I, Chris Taylor
I, Chris Taylor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution
Of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
All the duties incumbent upon me
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 8.
As a member of the Virginia Beach City Council, District 8.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
For a term beginning January 1, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2026.
And ending December 31, 2026.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. And if you've, come on up and get your seats. Wasn't that spectacular? All right, another very important part of our ceremony that we're going to be doing now is the election of the Vice Mayor. We will wait for everybody to get seated. I now open the floor for nominations for Vice Mayor. Mr. Balucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I am pleased to have the opportunity to nominate our Vice Mayor, Rosemary Wilson, to continue serving as Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Wilson's many accomplishments and contributions are well-known to our community and to our city. And frankly, we don't have time for me to list them all here today. But I do want to just note that in 1996, Rosemary Wilson was elected to the School Board of Virginia Beach. And then in the year 2000, she was elected to serve as a member of this body, where she has continued to serve, and the Virginia Beach voters have continued to send her back to represent them. I strongly believe, pardon me. And then in 2021, Vice Mayor Wilson was elected by the City Council to serve as Vice Mayor. I strongly believe that she has the experience, the knowledge, the track record of success, as well as a willingness to continue serving as Vice Mayor. And as I said at the beginning of my remarks, I'm very pleased to nominate her to continue serving as our Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Sabrina Wooton for Vice Mayor. My reasons, my reasons for doing this are priorities. So when I ran, I ran, a few of us did, on affordable housing, on education, on workforce development. And in conversations around Vice Mayor, Councilmember Wooton spoke to me about those issues. And so, because that was important to me, I wanted to make sure we supported someone who also would make sure those issues make it to the agenda. So I'd like to support Councilmember Wooton. Thank you.
Great. Any other, any other nominations? Okay, at this time, I'll ask the City Clerk to open up the voting. And we will do a simultaneous vote. Ms. Wilson, if you vote for Ms. Wilson, you would vote for green. And if you vote for Ms. Wooton, you would vote for red.
Dr. Ross Hammond, can I get your vote, please? Mayor, so in order for me to, I'm not going to close the vote, just so I can read it. So eight votes for Ms. Wilson. I have two votes for Ms. Rouse, and Councilmember Remick is abstaining.
Okay. All right, at this point, you know, congratulations.
Thank you.
And and I believe we have a swearing-in now, don't we? Yes, honorable judges back. We, we have you on overtime, sir.
All right, Ms. Wilson. Oop, she, I could have done it from there. Been fine. Right there, it's fine, ma'am. If you'd be so kind as to raise your right hand. I, Rosemary Wilson
I, Rosemary Wilson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
That I will faithfully and partially discharge.
All of the duties incumbent upon me
All of the duties incumbent upon me.
As Vice Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach
As Vice Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach.
For a term beginning January 3, 2023
For a term beginning January 3, 2023.
And ending December 31, 2024
And ending December 31, 2024.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you, ma'am. If you'd be so kind, Ms. Wilson, I need if you'd sign this, make it all official.
We want to be official.
We do indeed, right up there.
I gave you a workout today.
It's a little bit. Thank you.
Judge Lewis, thank you very much. Okay, all council people have taken their seat and are now vested in the future of Virginia Beach. And I welcome each and every one of you. And I will maybe be making a few comments later. But as of right now, it's time for the others to share their, you know, comments. And, you know, perhaps maybe introduce yourself to the folks for the first time. But once again, you know, we look forward with great optimism going forward. And I just want to say, you know, it's honor to be among you. Okay, Vice Mayor Wilson, would you make some comments, please?
First of all, I want to thank this council for having the confidence and to allow me to be your Vice Mayor again. You have no idea how much it means to me. And I think I have shown in the past that I'm very collaborative. I will try to keep everybody informed to the best of my ability. The budget is a very, very big part of this job. And I think last year, we had one of the best budgets we've, that I can remember. And it was because everybody worked together so well. We have a lot of important issues to take on. And I know that this council can do it. I'm very, very optimistic about everyone that is sitting in these seats. And I know we're going to do a great job for our city, and we do it together. There is no I in team, and I think we are Team Virginia Beach. So I'm very, very grateful, and thank you for having the confidence in me.
Thank you. And now let's go down to the end. Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of council. And, and I'm reminded from the campaign trail, blessed or the brief, they are invited back. So so I would like to say thank you, first and foremost, to my family who's here today. Some of them are here, my daughter couldn't make it, but the rest of them are back there. And I want to tell them how much I appreciate it, because this job, I've been in public service for over three decades, and this job is not possible without your family, I promise you that. And I want to, I want to thank the voters of District 1 for showing their support in me and their trust and confidence in my ability to make good decisions for District 1. And I want to thank all my supporters and everybody that came out to help us, and everybody that encourages, encourages us on City Council every week. The good, the bad, the ugly, all of it is much appreciated, and we certainly hear it all. But I can tell you this, sitting up here on this dais, you don't realize the struggle that you go through, because somebody, what makes somebody happy makes somebody sad. So you just have to have the courage and the confidence to make the vote to represent the folks that put you in here. So thank you very much, and I look forward to a, a good year.
Thank you. Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm thrilled to be sitting here. I'm so excited. It's hard work, it's important work, but I'm very excited by this opportunity. So I want to thank every voter from District 10. I want to thank my family, my husband, Aaron, our daughter, Aleah, who got out of school today for this. So she got to see this important moment. I will work to collaborate with my colleagues. I will work to represent District 10. And I thank you for this opportunity and for this time.
Thank you. Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Duhaney and Mr. Stiles. This is just a fantastic beginning to what I know will be a lifetime experience for all of us, working together. I see a lot of friends up here, and I see a lot of friends out there as well. But I'd really love to thank my wife and my three beautiful girls who are in the audience and also out of school today. And behaving so nicely, I might add. And I also want to thank my mother, who could not make it today. She is watching remotely, she's recuperating from surgery. But you all have my commitment to approaching this job with an open mind, a light heart, and a firm commitment to doing what's best for our city and for the voters in District 9. I thank you very much for this tremendous honor to be able to represent you and all of us on this council.
Sabrina.
Good afternoon, and thank you. Congratulations to all the new members. It is a pleasure to see you sworn in. And I do look forward to working with each and every one of you on this body. Congratulations to Vice Mayor Wilson. I'd like to share a few comments. So in terms of the Vice Mayor process, so that folks know how it works. This is my third time submitting my name for this process. And here's what I've learned. They say three times is a charm. Don't know about that. But I have learned a few things. One of the first things I've learned is that there is no process. In fact, when I talked with one of the council members, you know, about the process, she reminisced and said, well, I remember how one would call on the phone and say, well, I'm going to run, and I want you to support me. And that's just how it's been. There's no real discussion for such an important role, as it's been said. It's a very important role, but there's not a lot of discussion amongst the body. Just before I came up on the dais, I was stopped by one of our new council members, and they said, what are we doing? We haven't discussed this. This is important. And so each time this position comes up, the question has been asked, what is the process of selecting Vice Mayor? Not the mere action of voting for a Vice Mayor on the dais, but what leads up to the process? This is never a collective discussion amongst the body about such a very important position. What goes into consideration of the position? Oftentimes, it is my understanding that there are six votes that are gathered behind the scenes, and the vote is called at the first meeting of the term after the general election. But as we work up to that process or to the vote, there's not a specific process. I have observed the above-mentioned activities that we avail ourselves to for this position. I have observed that it's often led to Vice Mayors holding that position for decades. Literally, decades. One recent council member held that position for 16 years. One other council member held it for 10 years. And so that's what the kind of activities that we participate in, it doesn't lead to an opportunity for others to serve. Diversity. And so those are some of the things that I have led, I, I learned. And I would like to see this precedent change. And so this body that's sitting here has the opportunity to implement that change. The first process must be, it should be transparent. There should be a discussion amongst the body of what is expected of the Vice Mayor? What are the, the duties? And educate those who don't know. That's important, because they should know what they're voting for and whom they're voting for, and that person's track record. Most really don't know. So next, perhaps we can look at how the body appoints the Vice Mayor in the Vice Chair position from other bodies, such as our School Board. I know the School Board, they provide members who are interested in that position with an opportunity to serve. And they switch it up a bit. They give opportunity, they give chances for diversity. And so, thirdly, I would say to my colleague, Vice Rosemary Wilson, during your last term, you were engaged in some behavior that gave me pause. And I was very concerned. One case in point was where there was a discussion about the local election to bring a question for the referendum for November's voting to change or to do a referendum to change that system. And you didn't include the entire body. I was approached by a newer council member who said they were disturbed by that decision. And so was I. In fact, the person said to me that you focused on the Republican side and not the Democratic side. Well, council should be nonpartisan. And so I would just encourage you to be inclusive of all of us. Not any specific agenda, but call all of us, whether you think we're Republican or Democrat, or whether we agree or disagree. Make sure that you are inclusive of this entire body, because I don't want to see another issue like that in the paper. I read about it in the paper, and it was, it was very disturbing. And so what I would say also, don't undermine processes and procedures. Because there was another instance that came up where you talked to an individual and told them that they could chair the Citizens Review Panel. That's not protocol. And I brought, brought this information up to the other members of the body who served formerly as well. And I think it's important to bring it up amongst this body. That action was against Robertson rules, and it undermined the process of that whole Citizens Review Panel. So those are just two things. We do have a challenging year before us. We do have new folks here. So I, I just want us to get it right. But how can you get it right if you don't have pertinent discussions? Happy to have these discussions before publicly at the dais, but if you don't have the opportunity, you have to have that discussion at the dais. So again, congratulations to everyone. Looking forward to a great future. God bless.
Okay, Ms. Henley. Barbara.
On another note, I would just like On another note, I would just like to address the perspective of what a City Council is and what we as City Council members are. City Council is a continuing body. That means that we actually are standing on the shoulders of all of those City Councils that have gone before us. And we've had some fantastic people over the years who have served on our City Councils. And they've handed us a city that's an extremely strong, good city to live in. We have something over 460,000 people. And each person is important. Each person is special. Each person has special needs. And it's our job to do the best that we can to serve the needs of all of the people. And our job is to try to make certain that when our four-year term is over, we're handing to the next City Council a city that's even better than today's. I think this is a great challenge for all of us. It's a tremendous responsibility that we have as a body, as we have individuals, not for our own individual sake, but for the good of the city. And it's that responsibility that is so great and that I take very humbly to go forward in this next term and look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Hey, Amelia.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, our staff, and my friends out here. It is indeed an honor that you took to be here for me. I thank you. And I would love if you would just stand one second so you can see the diversity of this community that came out to support me. Thank you. Virginia Beach is my home, and I've dedicated my adult life to serving this community in various capacity. We live in a one-of-a-kind community, and together, we can build a city that makes everyone feel welcomed, listened to, and appreciated. My prior service as council member for Kemsville prepared me with institutional knowledge, familiarity with our capital projects and lived experience, which is very valuable to getting things done. As an educator, I am committed, enthusiastic, and bring an interactive approach that is inclusive and beneficial, not only for the residents of District Four, but our entire city. In fact, somebody asked me, what's special about your district? I said, we have several majority-minority, and this is the largest of its kind. We have 45,493 residents in this district. Forty-one percent black, 37.5 white, 12.8 Hispanic, 8.3 Asian. And so you understand why I had my campaign literature changed into Spanish so we know all of us matter, not just one group. My parents, I come from a family where my father, Honorable Nathan Ross, was the first mayor of Morrovia, Liberia, West Africa. And my mother, Mrs. Nancy Ross, was always in the community advocating for education and youth empowerment. This introduced me to politics, community engagement, and the importance of education at an early age. Community engagement involves authentic input, consideration of recommendations, and accountability. Please know, it does not matter who gets the credit because you will hear people, I did this, I did that. More important is that we accomplish our goals. Our mission must be to improve this city by using its institutional resources equitably for all residents, including seniors, veterans, youth, military family, and our multicultural population. We are stewards of the public trust, and I will try to accomplish this trust by working with my council member in a civil, collegial, and respectful manner. I'm jumping a little ahead because of time. My ideas and platform, of course, includes rebuilding our aging schools. Importantly, providing our cultural arts amenities that is inclusive, realizing and revitalizing public transportation to expand to rider and pedestrian trailways. And we can boast of public safety because we have one of the best all hands-on hazard departments in a city for a city our size. Of course, affordability, workforce housing is inclusive for a sustainable economy. Another goal dear to my heart, and a lot of you know, is one day to build the Virginia African-American Culture Center as a place to educate the public about African-Americans' contributions to the Commonwealth. Because remember, we are the city of the first landing. Everyone may not get everything they advocate for, but there should always be room for compromise. I'm dedicated to a reasonable policymaking process while maintaining humility, integrity, tenacity, and again, mutual respect. These principles over time have served me well, and I look forward to serving you, not only from the council chamber, but in the community because I have learned that visibility is viability. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to first just express my, just a really hearty welcome to everyone who's here today. Just like Mr. Schulman said, I look out and I see a lot of friends. I see a lot of community leaders, a lot of people who love our city. In fact, I'm sure this room is filled with people who love our city of Virginia Beach, our community. And we're all here for one reason and one reason only, and that's to serve the people of our city. And that's to create a path where our great city and the wonderful people who live here and visit here have a chance to fulfill their full potential and to have a bright future for every single person. I want to welcome the new members of this body. I want to congratulate your supporters and your family for the investment you made in them and for what you've done to allow them the opportunity to serve here. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you to do just that, what we discussed, our shared goal, which is to create a bright future for every single person who lives here. I think it's important to remember that you can oppose an idea without attacking a person, that you can disagree and not question a person's motive or their character. And if we remember those things as we move forward, we will be very well positioned to serve our community, to advocate for our positions, and to create a pathway where we can establish a bright future for every single person in our city and for our city in general. We live in a great community. I was born and raised here. And I can tell you with no hesitation or reservation that sitting up here with each of you and having a chance to do this job is the greatest honor and responsibility of my lifetime. I hope that all of you new and returning members have had the same incredible experience that I've had. And I'm ready to get to work. I'm ready to get to the reception and celebrate you. And I'm looking forward to 2023, 2024, and beyond with each and every one of you. We have a great city staff. I encourage you to rely upon them, to trust their feedback and their expert knowledge. And, and Happy New Year. Looking forward to working with all of you.
And Mr. Balucci, my final remarks will be brief so we can get to the reception. Chris.
Good afternoon. I first like to give an honor to God. Without him, I wouldn't be here. To the mayor, Vice Mayor, to the voters of District Eight, who've given me this honor. It's humbling. My father grew up in Sea-Tac, my mother in Little Neck. And my dad said the best decision he ever made was finding Janice and moving to Little Neck. And, and so I'm thankful for the opportunity to have, I hope, a broad perspective. I'm thankful for my wife and my family that's here, neighbors of 30, 40 years, 30 years, classmates. And I'm excited to work together. I ran on community, and so that will be my priority, not just District Eight, but our community as a city. I ran on civility to bring a sense of decency back to civic duty. And so I give you all permission that if you see me behaving in a manner that's not civil, that you can call me. And then I also ran on collaboration. I believe the Vice Mayor or Mayor said there's no I in team, but there definitely is me. And so we have to collaborate. We all have objectives, we have priorities, and we have constituents that we have to answer to. But if we can't effectively work together to move this city forward, then we will answer to those constituents. So I thank everyone for the city staff, my son Christian, who's hanging out with his aunt, my son Caleb, who's in kindergarten. We chose not to take him out of school today, so he didn't miss a day. And thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving you all.
Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone, it's an honor to be here. I'm very humbled. The view is nice and the seat's comfortable. I'm looking forward to serving you. First, let me thank my wife, Mary Gentry. She worked in the City Budgets Office a long time ago with Mark, with Dave Bradley. So she's going to be a great help to me. She was great on the campaign, but Mary Gentry, thank you. And teammates and Team Remick, thanks for being here today. Everyone that I've met during this orientation, we've had, a lot of us have been working very hard, the new members, through orientation, through staff, through organized meetings, through unorganized meetings. And I can tell everyone here in the audience and up here on the dais that I'm very impressed with the professionalism, with the commitment that each and everyone has had to us and your help going forward. We're going to need your help, but I'm looking forward to it. I'm very impressed so far. And I've met, you could look at me, I've met a lot of people through my many years. When I moved here in 1985 with a full head of hair from Suffolk and Smithfield, Virginia, where I grew up. So I look forward to working with everyone on staff. To fellow council members, I pledge an open mind, collaborative spirit, of course. Again, there's no I in team. That's, that's a great saying because we need six people to get legislation or ordinances passed. So I pledge to be an open mind for everything that you want to ask of me and of course, to return all phone calls, texts, and emails to everyone within 24 hours. That's, I know that's a pledge, not, that's a commitment. But anyhow, I will be at this full-time, 40 to 60 hours a week, and I look forward to it. And thank the members of District Six for your votes and support, but also remind everyone up here, and I think you don't need to be reminded, that we also represent Virginia Beach. And so we need to take that into account as we serve our districts and our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, I just want to thank all of you for taking the time and effort to come here and acknowledge a remarkably new-minted city council that is here to work for you. This is a new beginning in so many ways. We, just the other week, completed our first 60-year anniversary as a city. We are a remarkable city. We have some 460,000 people strong. We are a faith-based community of many faiths, the glue that holds us together as a people. We're a safe city. We're a livable city. We have a lot to be proud of. Tell you what, you know, government is a contact sport these days in a lot of ways. But, you know, in a lot of ways, I really think Virginia Beach distinguishes itself from some other places when you think about it, in terms of just being livable, our community. You know, we as a city over the last couple of years have been through tragedy. We have been through challenges. And we, and let me give a lot of kudos to our prior council members that we came through. You know, we came through some of the most challenging times in the history of Virginia Beach. And then once again, I will always say, and I've been asking this for a while, name a city that made it through COVID better than we did. You know why? Because, and I'll say this, and I've said it often, no mayor does anything by him or herself. It's the collaborative effort of a great team that's up here now, a new team. It's collaborative effort with a great city manager and a senior management staff. It's a collaboration of about 7,400 employees that it takes to run a city of our size and magnitude, 24 seven. It's a great, about a great school system. It's about public safety. It's about so many ingredients that it takes to run a city. But I'll tell you what, I look at today, our next 60 years, I'll tell you what, with optimism and hope that once again, we can continue to distinguish ourself, come together as a community like we have never done before. And I'll tell you what, I think you're going to find that you have the leadership at this dais, that you're going to have, you know, the people of Virginia Beach who are giving. We are considered one of the most caring cities in the country. We are a great city, and we are and always will be. Thanks to you all. VB Strong. Thank you and God bless you. And at this point, Mr. Balucci, we are adjourned to go to the reception.